You need to take that risk.
Rich knows what to do.
Off the bounce.
No.
Oh, wait, we're.
All right. You're on. We're lost.
We're on? Okay. Let's get this show going.
Right.
First resolution, Resolution 2425231, Resolution adopting the minutes from the last Common Council meeting on May 20th. Resolution 2425232, Resolution adopting the minutes from our special Common Council meeting last Thursday on the 29th. Resolution 2425233, Resolution authorizing the sale of 65 Academy Street, 16 Union Street, 127 Division Street, and 36 John Street. Alderwoman Collins, and she has an amendment attached to make up.
The SBL.
The SBL number.
John Street should be 55.52-2-4.
65?
55.
55.
52-2-4. Under the SBL.
Gotcha.
Yep. Any questions about this for Irene? It's so quiet in here tonight. Okay, Resolution 2425234, Ceremonial Resolution recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQI plus Pride Month in the city of Amsterdam, Alderwoman Quistemars.
Pretty straightforward. And then tonight we'll have a special guest to talk to us as well about an event going on in the city.
Kelly will read this resolution and Stacy will call the role actor. Resolution 2425235, Resolution authorizing an RFP request for proposal for concessionary services at Betters Park, Alderman Holiday.
Right, yep, pretty, we talked about this, maybe it was last meeting or the meeting before, but, uh, yeah, that food trailer that we purchased in the past stationed at Betts Park and.
I see it.
Yeah.
Harvey asks me about it every time we drive by. Are they selling hot dogs there yet?
We have a customer in the wings.
Anybody have anything else for Rich? Resolution 2425236, Resolution authorizing contract with Megabytes Event LLC in connection with concessionary services at Riverlink Park, Alderman Marticello.
Well, if you look at the contract, we discussed it, Mayor and I and Megan, and we went over a few things that need to be done. And there's gonna be another contract expiration coming up, expiring with the Jaeger brothers. We talked to Megan, she hasn't started yet, but she's going to. Just some of the finer points, you want to explain, Mary, you want?
Well, yeah, the biggest difference is gonna be the way that the cafe is staffed and open. What she's going to be doing a lot of is providing almost like a delivery service from Anthony's, which is her Deli Avenue 5S, all day, every day for boaters who come to our city. They'll be able to pick up the phone or their, yeah, their smartphones, contact her, place an order, and she'll get it down to them, which I think is gonna be a really nice thing for the boaters. In addition, she'll be open whenever there's an event in the park, then they do the ski show, when they do any of the Saturday night free concerts, when they do any of the city events, she'll be staffing the cafe. And at all other times, you'll be able to go down there and order food from her. If you don't have a picnic, she'll deliver it, those kinds of things. So it's gonna be a little bit of a different setup, but I think it's gonna be a very, very good setup. She's excited, we're excited. The rec department's been down there, we've got all the equipment straightened out, it's getting clean, it's pretty clean right now. The one issue left is the elevator, we're still working on that, it's a big item, but we're still working on that. But I'm looking forward to giving this a shot, it's gonna be totally different, and I think it's gonna be better than we've ever had, so we'll see.
Amen to that, because this year's concerts are the best that I think we've ever scheduled. It's, plus we have a bicentennial this year.
We have a lot of things going on down there.
And she is gonna set up care and system down there, so she'll know, one boat comes in, she collects the money, and she also have like a security, she can see everything that's going on there on the boat.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Jimmy on this? So Resolution 2425237 is what Jimmy was alluding to, it's a resolution terminating the contract with Brent and Corey Jaeger in connection with the concessionary services at Riverlink Park. So he already pretty much gave an explanation into previous resolution. Does anybody have any questions concerning the Jaegers and transition? Resolution 2425238, Resolution approving audit, Alderwoman Collins. Anybody have any questions? We have five consent resolutions, first one being Resolution 2425239, Resolution contract awarding the 2025 street resurfacing program, Alderman Marticello.
This is, it doesn't say here, but this is the Market Street, and Mike hit it right on the head. He said it's gonna be like between 1.2, 1.3, 1.4. It came in, and we're gonna be good, and the mayor talked about getting Market Street paid as a priority, and this is what we're gonna do. And Mike, you can say a few words about it.
Yeah, so, as everyone may recall, our chips allocation for 2025, the 2.23 million, we're reserving about $200,000 for our local share for Crescent Avenue Bridge, funds your bridging, aren't we, have a 5% local match and a 95% federal commitment on that, which is a great deal. So, that aside, our base bid was that piece of Market Street from Prospect to the north side of the Van Dyke intersection, everybody can agree it is divorced out there in terms of rightability. When, so, I will be writing the streets that I have on the alternate list and trying to reestablishing the priority. Honestly, the reason I'm doing that is because I haven't looked at them in that light in probably three months, and I need to revisit it. And so, once we're underway and I'm confident on the, that we're gonna, that our numbers are going good, then we will release streets in priority, in the priority that's established, and do as many of the alternates as feasible within the budget.
But you said, awesome, Mayor. We're gonna do Market Street, that's all, the leftover money we're gonna have, we're gonna fill in the needed streets that need to be done. And Mike's gonna go through that list and a priority, and then an alternate, all right?
Sure.
We're gonna have, well, we figure about $700,000, right around there, leftover after Market Street is done and our share of the Crescent Bridge project is paid, we'll have about $700,000 left over, which is still a good amount, looking at the list of streets, Mike, as he said, he'll go through them and come back to us for the recommendation, but I think you're gonna be pleased with the total program. I think more importantly, the residents are gonna be pleased, we're gonna get a lot done.
What were the Market Street crossroads again? Van Dyke to?
Van Dyke to the north, all the way down right here to Prospect.
Oh, this far, okay.
Yes, yeah.
I thought I missed her at Prospect, because that's a lot.
And then DOT takes over the rest.
Right, so it's pretty much the whole part since ours.
Yes, once you get below Prospect, essentially just below the intersection there, that's become state jurisdiction.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure we were gonna be able to go that far, that's great.
Yeah, no, we did the right. It's gonna be a tremendous improvement.
Yes.
Tremendous improvement.
Any more questions for Alderman Marticello?
Thank you.
Resolution 2425240, Consent Resolution, Resolution Honor Guard Budget Transfer, Alderwoman Collins.
So it's just the transfer of donations that's received. For $419,096. Now, did you say the code was wrong, or the code is correct?
If Louise could explain where the, how it ended up in the fund balance, how we, I'm just curious how we got the money and then we're transferring it back.
Yeah, the money was received in a prior year, so it's, it's like a restricted portion of the fund balance.
Does that mean you have to buy used uniforms because of the year old?
Does anybody have any questions for Irene or Louise concerning this resolution?
It was funny, we laughed. We just laughed, we did that.
I got it.
Resolution 2425241, Consent Resolution in support of Port Jackson Bachi Club formation of a nonprofit corporation, Alderman Marticello.
Well, last resolve clause says it all, that the city supports the formation of a nonprofit corporation for the Port Jackson Bachi Club pursuant to IRS Code 501(c). What this means is, the Bachi Club on the south side is gonna raise all their money, and they're gonna raise their money and put it into their building down there, which is, it's been there for years, and it's just a shack that's put together where they hold their meetings. It's not gonna cost the city nothing, but the fact that you have to use this code means they can accept grants, and the money will probably go to the city, and then it'll be funneled into, through the grant into the Bachi Club, and that's how they're gonna fund this. So whatever fundraiser they have, it goes into the Bachi Club. Whatever money they raise, or if they wanna charge dues, it goes into the Bachi Club, and that way, it's theirs. Now, as far as the land around it, it's a lease, we own all the land, we own everything around it, we always have, and we actually own the Bachi Club. It's just that we just leased the property, and all the money that goes, when they raise it, goes into their fundraising events. Now, the most important thing is they're gonna apply for a grant, that's what this IRS 103, all right, Tony?
That's right.
Thank you.
But what happened, what were they, how were they raising money for the last 30 years? They weren't a nonprofit.
Well, what they did is, they did whatever they had, they put into the club. You see, we, it's our building right now.
It remains our building, right?
Yeah, so they wanna put a roof on it, we have to pay for the roof. They wanna put siding or build a, we would have to do it, the city. We would have to put a line item in budget, because just like any one of our parks that we own, anything they want, we have to put the money in a budget, pay for it, and then we can install it. This way, they can raise, they raise their own money, and they put it in, and we don't have to put nothing in with it.
I think the idea in their request for the city to support this stems from the notion that they will be more successful in their fundraising efforts if they're able to establish this classification.
But they are still renewing the lease, right? We have to renew their lease, so we need to review that lease and make sure.
As I, the lease is set to expire in '27, and as I understand it, city is going to be renewing that lease regardless of whether this not-for-profit activity is for it.
When Alderman LaGirra was here, before he left, I think 2016, he took out a 20-year lease for a dollar. As I read the resolution before I got on board here.
Right, I just, we just wanna review the terms of the lease with the addition of a new clubhouse, how it's gonna be impacted.
Just so you know, this is not the only park in the city. Isabel's Field is also a 501(c). That's how they got the money for the.
You mean Little Lee.
Little Lee, Little Lee.
You mean.
Isabel's Field, so the money they raised, whatever they put together, the Ashwater Field, and the new concession building they have up there, this is the same thing. This is what they did. All right? Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Resolution 2425242, Consent Resolution, Resolution authorizing the award of contracts to provide lawn care services. Obviously, this is not the original resolution, the consent resolution we've received earlier, there's been some additions, but as far as the four quadrants go, Outdoor Designs is gonna have Zone 1 and 2, Altiris is gonna have part of Zone 1, and Class Property Services is gonna have Zone 3 and 4. And it's $100 per property per month, correct?
Yep.
Any questions?
Mayor, you, I think Michonne Jackson put this together? Thank you very much. I've had more calls just the last weekend and because of high grass, for grass to be cut.
Time to go, it's time to get him on there. No more May is no more, because that's usually the big excuse.
So the number of properties is 112?
The, it's 100 bucks per property.
How many properties are?
There's bids, there's some with 27, some with 24, some with 25, one would, it's gonna, you know, if you look, if you add it all together, it's gonna be about $48,000.
Could be even more, I mean, because the one that they did before, the grass is coming to height, it's already grown up again.
No, but they're, it's, again, they're gonna be mowed once a month for three, or for four months. So every property that the city owns will be mowed once a month for four months by this contract. And we'll see how it goes.
It's broken up into four zones, has nothing to do with the mowers.
To give you an example, last year, we mowed 112 properties. Okay, this year, we have, we'll be mowing them at the rate of 100 a month for four times, so we should have a dramatic improvement in the, in the appearance of the city.
Tony, thank you for drawing this up.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate it.
Any questions?
But it is gonna cost more than we were paying previously.
Well, it depends upon what you say costs are, we did a, we did a cost analysis, and it's not going to, you know, when you add in everything that we were spending, you'll, you know, and we can show you that cost analysis, Kim Bromley put that together. $100 a lot is a very good price, costs us more than $100 a lot to mow it with temporary people, when you add in everything.
Everybody get to that?
Yep.
Resolution 2425243, Consent Resolution authorizing 24 Regina Lane to connect to sanitary sewer, Alderman Holiday, this is a good one.
Yeah, we've come up with a solution, Mr. Clark, thank you so much for all that hard work. Town of Amsterdam looks like it's gonna extend their line to Regina, which is great, and the owner of that property will be paying one and a half times on the sewer, is that correct? Jump in, feel free.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, currently what other outside, the few other outside users that are not in a sewer district are paying, is one and a half times the rate, and whatever that, however the rate's established for any given budget here.
And we're doing this under the condition, I mean, not the condition, is the Town of Amsterdam has told us that they are gonna form a water district for the homes that are currently hooked into our sewer line that are not in a water district. So that's an important piece to this, because we are not, as this resolution states, not gonna be responsible for maintenance, hooking up anything, it's all gonna be on the homeowner, and when the water district comes in, the homeowner will go to the Town of Amsterdam for any problems, and the Town of Amsterdam will come to us, correct, Mike?
Yeah, that's exactly how a sewer district should work.
So it just wasn't properly set up previously for the owner?
Wasn't set up at all.
At all.
We have like five or six, Kelly, that are outside of.
I do, I know that.
Does anybody have any questions for Rich? That does it for the resolutions and consent resolutions, Mike, do you have any, do you want to go over your engineer's report in the last 12 minutes?
Could I do a word report?
Sure.
Cool.
So Alderman Holiday and I have been working on the Rockton Business District.
Being the U.S. be honest.
Okay. And we got to the point where we were creating a mission statement, we've created the lines of the district, where it begins and ends, which was a big one, you were there for that, you held the map.
I did, I was good at that.
Yeah. We, you know, figured out, it's hard to draw lines and say like, well, right here it stops, even though there's another business and another business that, you know, we like, but perhaps they can create another, like, they're more of like maybe five corners, it was really tough on Forest Avenue deciding where Rockton ended and like the five corners began, but we created that line. We had our city historian, Rob Van Hazlen, come speak about the history of the area, just so all the business owners had an idea of that. He and Hal have worked with a lot of them already on their businesses, and history seems to be very important to a lot of those businesses. Like I said, a mission statement, we're gonna work on having our logo created, and then kind of make more of a structure as far as, are we gonna have dues, are we gonna create a nonprofit, are we gonna create a bid, those types of things, but our goal is to have a kickoff at Creek Fest in August, unveiling of our sign and our logo and what we're planning to do. We're pretty much, it's a group of people, a group of businesses that wanna come together and support each other, and I believe the mission statement, we settled on our family-friendly businesses in a family-friendly neighborhood, and that's kind of where we're starting, so I wanna tell everybody about that, and I'm just really excited, because we tried to start this a couple, a year or two ago, didn't get much momentum, but now we're really rocking, as they say, in Rockton.
Rockin' on Rockton?
Yes, that's one of our hashtags.
Concert series and call it that.
We decided that we hashtag as opposed to the name of it, well, you were working on it.
Very good, very good.
So, I did wanna talk about that.
That's nice.
Yes. Good job holding it aside, buddy. Anybody have any questions for Kelly? Rich? Mike Clark?
Thank you, Alderman. I already reported to you on the street paving, resolution is up tonight before 4:00. One thing I, if you notice, there were three bids, the, two of them are very tight, that's always a good indication. So I'm satisfied, I'm really happy with this program, it's gonna be a lot of work this year, especially dealing with all the additional things that go along with working in Market Street. Also, hydrant flushing is underway, as of yesterday, we got four weeks total, we're sending notices by for each week, a week before, so any, any particular business or institution or something like that, they will see those notices a week in advance.
Mike, could I just ask, could you just explain why we flush the hydrants?
Yeah, sure, I mean, it's, it's a basic maintenance program that all water systems are recommended to do twice a year, especially in the northeast twice a year, when we're kinda limited by winter weather, where our times are, we can't just willy-nilly do it whenever we think we need it. All water systems that are fed from surface waters in particular, will pick up natural, particularly, you know, made some sand, or our water occasionally will add magnesium mineral, some fine mineral that it will, in very small amounts, perfectly harmless, most of it doesn't get through, but where it does, it will accumulate in hydrants or dead ends, and folks will start to notice in certain areas, you know, some people may get some sediment, and occasionally will notice it in other areas when we draw large amounts, so what it does is it flush, it's just what it says, it'll flush one section of line, we start at the highest points and work our way down, the idea is to clean out the, clean the pipe.
Clean the water lines.
And, and it takes, it takes four weeks to do it, basically, four work weeks.
Thank you. It also checks the hydrants, make sure they work.
That, you're right, that's, that's another good thing that comes out of that, is if there's any issues that develop, it's a way for us to update our list of hydro conditions. Also, currently, the streetlight program is wrapping up, or it's very close to wrapping up, and I believe we're in position to go pretty quick to move into a maintenance contract, right, if I remember correctly? And it looks like we have a good option there. The clubhouse project is well underway, and that continues as fast as we can go, everybody's seen the work, I'm sure. South Side Boardwalk, the same thing, that work is well underway, and as it begins to take shape, I would encourage anybody to just walk over the south side of the pedestrian bridge, it's gonna be more impressive than you can show on a piece of paper. Crescent Ave Bridge, I mentioned that already, we awarded it the last meeting, I have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, where we meet with the contractor, establish all the roles and responsibilities, and most importantly, discuss schedule, so that is the number one thing that comes out of those meetings, is when a contract brings to schedule, and we establish where we're at and what our, what our end dates are gonna be in, and in this case, also when our start dates are gonna be. And that is all of the newest items I have on my report.
I have another, go back to Regina Lane, the water district is south, the Town of Amsterdam is creating a new one, or they're extending their current one?
I believe what they're planning to do is extend, you can extend a water district if it would be contiguous with an existing district. You can't have one water district that's fragmented and they don't touch.
They can't stick it in Higginman or something.
Right. They need to be, it needs to be an extension of, and be contiguous with an existing one.
Okay, so I was thinking about our friends on Harrow or Lane, and their.
I think, my understanding was the extension, the information that the town had shared over the last year, and I'm really sure to speak for them, but my understanding was they were gonna include that as one district extension, come down midline, that piece in there, pick up a piece of Miami.
Okay.
And also.
I think that was.
Kind of something in one fell swoop, in case other people wanna add into it, and they could figure out.
I think that, I think they were gonna do an extension in multiple directions.
All right, I'll look into that and see.
Harrow Water District is a more expensive water district than River County, and that's why I'm not sure.
Well, I'm thinking like they could put it in the sewer district to start, and then, in the water and sewer district now, and then they can deal with whether or not they do any setups later.
Well, no, you're right, I mean, they're gonna be a district.
Right.
Or which one they put them in, Harrow, for some reason throughout the years, paid more money, the people in the Harrow District paid more money than the people in Higginman. That do.
Yeah. Well, they've, yeah, I don't know, I just know they've got a lot of water issues there, that they're trying to get.
The question I had before we start, this, Mike, did you go out to bid yet for the lead lines, the water?
No, we are, so that project currently is in the, I would call it the information gathering phase. On, on our website, Dan Gray, our community and economic development.
Couple contractors asked me about that, that's why.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not there yet, because this project is funded through, essentially through HUD, it's a federal project, it needs to be.
CBG, yeah.
So everyone, there's gonna be a series of workshops, we put out, we send information to, or are sending information to everyone that we have firm-led services on. Ideally, for the amount of money we got, I'd like, I'd like to get 150 addresses back that are confirmed, but they need to qualify themselves too.
Yeah, we're doing an income qualification verification right now, we're starting that now.
So it's a process.
Okay, but.
Thank you.
It's coming.
Thank you.
And as is the demolition project that, you know, where we received a million dollar grant to knock down 23 homes, that's another process that takes a lot of administrative work in the front end, and we're working on that, but it's, that's coming along as well, and that'll be done this summer, so, a lot going on. And since we got a couple minutes, I did wanna mention, you know, we're talking about the streets, a very well-equipped and heavily manned DOT road patching crew completed an extensive pothole and road rot, patching project on the entire length of East Main Street, and yesterday, and when they had finished, I drove that path, I think, I'm sure you did too.
It's much better.
It's much better, and again, you know, we appreciate the fact they came in and did that, it definitely needed it, it's gonna make driving in that stretch of the road much less treacherous until the next paving season, and remember, everybody, next paving season, DOT will come in and do that whole street all over, so we'll be in good shape. You know, we, you think about, you know, Mike, Mike and I, we talked about this, we got Church Street done, we're getting Market Street done this year, we'll have East Main Street done next year, and those are, those are, you know, it's quite an accomplishment to get those three streets done, but when they are done, the road, the heaviest traveled roads in our city will be in much greater shape, but we do wanna thank DOT for doing that.
Mayor, one minute, can you give it up, that's for another part, because now the kids are down there playing?
Yes.
They're asking me questions, this.
No, I hear you.
That place was packed on the way over here today.
Yeah, we went down with Congressman Tonko yesterday, and naturally Congressman Tonko, when he sees things, has ideas, which he has every right to have ideas, because he gave us most of the money for that part, but we're now kind of, Mike, we're working on a concrete plan.
Yeah, we're just gonna modify, there's just the concrete flatwork is coming, and we're gonna do a couple, it's not really a change, you're just gonna add a little color It's not really a change. You're just going to add a little color to a couple of places.
You know, he's very good at that.
Get the water connected in, graded out and get it in service, everything in service, including the splash pad that's there.
And where there's going to be, you know, there's going to be a fence around that and we're working on it.
They want to know, let's a few stop me. They've seen the canopy.
Yes.
Like what's going to go on in there?
That's a pavilion. There's going to be tables game, you know, underneath there. They'd be able to sit, play games, table games, things like that. Then the other thing is like a performance venue. Hopefully we'll get, you know, some musicians, local musicians to play.
That shell.
Yep, that shell.
All right, thank you.
And the splash pad, of course, donated by Dr. Ralph.
That's what we're all waiting for.
In the playground, four great elements. But we're also going to be adding some planning areas. So let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Here.
Alderman Holliday.
Here.
Alderwoman Collins.
Here.
Alderman Marticella. Alderman Carpenter.
Here. Make a motion to adopt the agenda with five resolution, or eight resolutions and five consent resolutions.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Marticella.
Aye. Okay, we have some proclamations tonight.
Yes, thank you. I've got one today. It is June, which is LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And every year I pass this resolution for the city of Amsterdam, but this year we do have a special guest from Centro Cipico, Debbie Valentine, and she's here to talk about some of the things going on in our city for Pride Month. But if I could, I think I'd like to present this to you and then you could also share with the group what, what we're going to be doing. So. Where we should stand. Let's stand over here. So then everyone can see us. This is ceremonial resolution recognized in June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Amsterdam. Whereas the city of Amsterdam proudly claims the motto, "A small bit, city, big heart." And whereas in order to live up to having a big heart, it must be made clear that hate, discrimination, and fear have no place in our city. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex community are often subject to violence, discrimination, and consistent efforts to undermine their human rights throughout our country and world. Therefore, the city of Amsterdam will raise the rainbow flag on City Hall grounds to represent a safe place within our city lines for the LGBTQI+ community to be seen and respected for who they are. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city of Amsterdam celebrates June as LGBTQI+ Pride Month and dedicates itself to be welcoming and inclusive community to all. So thank you for coming. And I'd love for you to talk to everyone a little bit about what's going on.
I want to get a picture too quickly. I have one more. All right, thank you.
So June 14th, we're trying to do our first annual family pride, which is, is only going to be, it's going to be very short, just one to four. We're going to do special events. So we have a 75 foot obstacle course. We're going to do some racing with the children. So we're going to have children competitions, racing through the obstacle course, muffin eating contest. And I think we're doing like a tug of war in musical chairs. We're doing it family pride just so we can kind of be more involved, like involved families, children, more intimate for family gatherings. As far as the, the kids in the, I chose veterans field as the center to throw this specific event just because like, I know there's been a lot of bad backlash with that park lately with the kids. I grew up here, so I'm trying to see, throw an event there that's going to help hopefully have the kids think like, well, there's a familiar face there. Let's kind of like respect this area. Let's figure this out. But like I said, I have a big, everybody kind of knows me. I know all of the children. So hopefully that works out for everybody. So.
Great. And Thursday, we're going to raise the flag at noon here at City Hall.
Noon City Hall, Thursday, perfect.
Excellent. And any other programs going on or?
We have our Latin Fest, which you guys already know about Riverlyn Park. We're hoping to get that elevator fixed because of handicap.
It's working, but it's, we gotta get it.
Last year it was so bad, but we actually had like help with like golf carts. I don't know how they did it, but they were getting everybody back and forth.
Yep.
Aside from that, we have our back to school in August. And then the, the holiday season comes up after that. But over the summer, that's what we've got going on.
You're talking about Ibero at Centro.
Yes, we have somewhere in vision of Ibero from Rochester.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Now we're into communications and presentations. Any of those? Any communications or presentations that you get? I do want to just, I think I'll do it here. I do want to announce that the city is planning to once again staff individual neighborhood playgrounds with an adult attendant. Thanks to Senator Farley, I'm sorry, Senator Fahey's procurement of a $50,000 grant. Our recreation department's now putting together a plan to have these individuals on duty at Certia, Arnold Ave, Esperanza Verde, Barclay, and Veterans Park. Playgrounds four hours per day between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, five days a week this summer. With these attendants in place, each park will be able to feature programs geared for elementary age schoolchildren, which will include arts and crafts, physical activities, and music components, among other things. It's good news for youngsters living in the neighborhoods around these parks and their parents. And we will be announcing more details as our staffing and programming plans are finalized. But again, a lot of our kids can't get to Veterans Park. They have neighborhood parks. They can't, they're afraid to, not afraid, but it's hard for them to to get there without supervision, to use them without supervision. So when I was a kid, we had these parks right throughout our city. Every park had, Jimmy, you remember.
The College Miss Park.
So we're bringing that back. And thanks on behalf of our city, I want to extend our deepest appreciation to Senator Fahey for going to bat for the kids of our city. This program fills a gap in our recreation program by providing this age group who do not or cannot attend our summer camp and cannot get to summer youth programs at more remote locations, the opportunity to walk a few blocks to some of our well-maintained, and that's something we're proud of. We've made a lot of improvements. You guys have approved a lot of improvements at our city parks. And the opportunity to walk a few blocks to some of our well-maintained city playgrounds for a summertime filled with constructive and supervised funds. So it's going to be a big addition to the city. And another thing that I just heard recently is that the school district is hoping to start a program at the Four Diamonds this summer for, for the older children. And where they're going to be doing a whole bunch of field activities, sports, et cetera. And that'll be run by the school district and we're really excited about that. So this summer, we're really trying to focus on some programming throughout the city, not just in one spot. And I think it's going to be a really, you know, I'm excited by that and I hope, I hope families and children are as well.
Can I jump in on that too? I think we're also going to have free meal lunches at those as well through New York State.
At Veterans, right?
I think there's going to be a couple of locations. I can get more details on that, but I know.
There is free food.
Yeah, there's going to be.
And I know our summer camp gives out, includes food. I mean.
Right.
But you're right. Yes, there is going to be free food distributed.
Like United Way was working with somebody on that.
Swimming pool, things like that. So it'll be a busy summer, but a good summer. That's all I've got. So we're on to the next item.
You have that email I gave you earlier?
Left it downstairs. I'm sorry. I forgot, Chris. Public participation. If there's anyone in the public who would like to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, address.
John Archet Wetroba, 18 Oster Street, Mayor. On May 19th, there was an article in the reporter about the school budget. There was an election. Okay, there were five people who were running. There were two open seats and they put this the day before the election, which was the 20th. All right, this is Monday. All right, didn't give you much time. Well, one of the candidates that ran, who actually won, John Brody, to my understanding is running against Kelly Quist de Bars in the first ward for Alderman. And my understanding, after making some phone calls, you can do that, but you can't be like on a school board and be on a common council at the same time. Now, if he, if he hypothetically was to win in November, chances are he would give up the school board because it's not a paid position, which then, which then you'd either have to have another election or else go to the person who lost. And maybe the person who lost doesn't want to be on a school board anymore. So I think that that, that whole thing stinks. And I actually signed a petition for him. That was for the, for the Alderman, for the common council. Actually, he didn't go to door to door, but there's somebody from the church that I go to come over. And I, and I think that that stinks totally. And I think that the people should try to, try to change that. And it, it shows the flaws in the system and it makes it, makes it look like a, kind of make it, things look like a laughing joke. That's the way I look at it. And I, I don't think it's right. And I think as you people, as elected officials, should say that there's something wrong and you can't do that. And, you know, and he was a supervisor at one time, Mayor. In fact, he was, was my supervisor. I think when, I don't think when we were eight wards, I think when we were, you know, the five wards.
Yep.
And so, I mean, to me, there must be a charter on a county level, a charter for the school board, a charter for you. So, I mean, I, I think there was a farce and stuff. And I'd like to say, I'd made some phone calls. I called the board of elections. I called, I go, I couldn't believe it. I thought there was like a misprint in the paper. But I thought that the reporter, if they had put, put the article in the paper earlier as far as the school board elections, then maybe, you know, people would say, wait a minute, you know, it would have dawned on him. How can he run for two positions? Or so, and it was too late, you know, to do anything about it. So, I mean, same thing with you. If all five of you, as far as I know, not, not one of you said that you got any opposition who was running. I don't know. Don't you think we should know who's running by this time? And maybe the recorder could put it in the paper? You know, what's wrong with knowing who's going to run? But that was, that was ridiculous. That was totally ridiculous of what he did. And, and, you know, of that particular situation. Usually I bring up three things. I think that I'm going to use my whole five minutes on this. But I mean, it's just, I don't think it's right. And I think that you should try to find somebody, I don't know if it's a Paul Tonko or something like that, to say that that's not right. And, and nobody should be able to run for two positions the same year. You know, you know, and to take it like that. But I, I think, I think a lot, I think that that really rots. And it's, you know, so something should be done on that. If you do have anything else to say. You brought up something earlier about the grass, you know, like you're going to have somebody going to cut the grass. It might be once a month, but you, but you're not saying that Kelly only has to cut her lawn once a month, right? You know, over her house.
No, but there's codes for lawn maintenance.
Oh, you want most of the lawns.
Okay, that's good. Because I was wondering, I thought maybe Kelly would wait a month or some before she cut the lawn. Okay.
Kelly's got a husband for that.
All right.
Thank you, Jack.
Bye.
You're good? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and people for the opportunity. Unfortunately, who I am here is, I won't use those words. I have a grievance and a right.
Your name, sir?
My name is Jack Hannah. I live on Midline Road in the town of Perth. Obviously, I'm not a resident of Amsterdam. I used to be when I was growing up. However, Amsterdam, as everyone knows here, cleared out a 20-foot section where the pipe comes from Glen Wild to the city. That ran on my property. The only reason I'm here and upset is because when they did that, they broke a piece of pipe that I use on my lawn for draining of the lawn for my, for my, I'm sorry, I can't see the word now. Anyway, it's broke. And for a year, one year now, I have been told by numerous people that we're going to take care of that. Never has happened. And when I, and when I'm, I don't want to get up. If any one of you people here had this happen to you, it would have been taken care of that week. But I'm not a resident. I live on Midline Road. I have talked to the mayor about it. I've talked to Mr. Clark about it. I've had people up there that look at it and Jack, we're going to take care of this for you. I have made numerous, I could show you 50 phone calls on here to City Hall. Don't, we're going to do it. It doesn't happen. And now it's a year. And, and I'm here to ask two questions. That's it. Just two questions. Very simple. A, is it going to be fixed? Very simple question. B, if it is, I don't want to hear next month. I don't want to hear in the coming summer. I want to hear when. And that, and I'm, I'm sorry to be so whatever here. But this is very aggravating. And if I have to go out and spend thousands of dollars to fix this myself, so be it. But that's wrong. And that's all I have to say. And if I could get those two questions answered, I would be a happy person.
Is reimbursement an option for you by chance of speaking?
Absolutely. I have brought that up when we used to talk about this.
We definitely broke the pipe? We broke the pipe.
Yes.
The pipe shouldn't.
No, it's city of Amsterdam. The people they hired declared the area broke.
Okay.
Understand that the drainage pipe that we're talking about crosses at a 90-degree angle on top of our transmission line. The only line feeding the city, we have an easement across all the properties to do it. So I have talked to Mr. Hannah many times and I do intend to fix it. But I will say, I'm not done, sir. But what I, I do intend to fix it. However, what, before I, before we dig one, I don't want anybody digging across there. If they hit that pipe, it's not a good thing. It's 4,500 gallons a minute. And it's not that deep in that area. It's four feet at most. So they have a plan to fix it. There's no point fixing it in the wet weather. And I will say that I will, I will ask that you sign a release because it's the only time the city should fix it. The pipe shouldn't be there.
Well, I, that I would have to look to. I haven't, I don't want to, I have a friend who's an attorney and I've been talking to him about this. And I don't want to get into that kind of stuff. I don't want to start signing things without talking to him or whatever. But like you say, how, how do you justify, and look, I'm sorry to bring all this stuff. How do you justify it being a year? It's been a year. Can't tell me that during last spring, summer, fall, there was no chance to do this.
Honestly, sir, the fact, if the fact that I'm would still consider doing it, I mean, let me put it this way. If the mayor tells me to do it tomorrow morning, I'll do it tomorrow morning. But if, if, if you, if the council and the mayor were to ask my opinion, should we do it? No, we should not. But I will do it.
Okay.
I'm not, I am not going to.
Because of the liability.
Because of the liability. Pipe shouldn't have been there in the first place. Pipe should not be there in the first place. But we are going to fix it, Jack. And we'll, you know, we'll get a date for you.
Please, that's all I'm asking. Yes, and a date.
Yep.
But, but Mr. Mayor, I've been through this for a year.
Right. But again, you just heard what the engineer said about the wetland. I mean, we, it took a while for us to say, yeah, we're going to fix this. It really did. I mean, we, it took us a while just to say we're going to fix this and we should fix it. We are going to fix it and we'll give you a date. All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The mayor said it, Jack.
The next.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Dennis.
Oh, I'm good. I was just here on behalf of the owners of Regina Lane. They want to be here. So they want to make sure the resolution got passed. I didn't want to be rude and late.
You're welcome to stay there the whole year.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
But if you want to leave, it's not rude.
Oh.
No. So we're into, we did the engineering report, Louise? Anybody, anybody have any questions for Louise or the engineer?
I'm going to bring, can we get a report just moving forward maybe like once a month? Kind of like what Stacy does with her report, like every other. I, I think we just did all the budget stuff. So we know what's going on right now. But as we move forward throughout the year, it's nice to have.
She will have one, she will reinstitute what she has been giving the council since she got here, which is a monthly report.
Right.
That summarizes everything.
Okay, good to know.
I just did it in the last time because we were meeting.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Any questions for the controller other than what Alderman Holliday wants? Okay, then we're on to old business, which is there any?
No.
Then we are into new business in the resolutions.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, two thirty-one. Resolution adopting meeting minutes from last common council meeting by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved, any questions? Call the roll.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-two. Resolution adopting minutes from special common council meeting by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved, any questions? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-three. Resolution authorizing sale of sixty-five Academy Street, sixteen Union Street, one twenty-seven Division Street, and thirty-six John Street by Alderwoman Collins.
We have amendment. We have to amend the the fifth whereas for thirty-six John Street, the SBL should state fifty-five point fifty-two dash four, dash two dash four.
Fifty-five dot fifty-two dash two dash four.
Yeah. Motion, the motion of the amendment?
Motion to approve. Make the change.
On the motion, please.
Call the roll.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye. Now we need a motion.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter. Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Excuse me, we just voted on a resolution. And it wasn't, it wasn't.
You're right. Pardon me?
We didn't read it.
That's a good point, Jimmy.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, we.
I know, I read the resolution.
She can move it whenever she wants. You want me to read the whole thing? What do you want me to?
That's what, the, the reason I'm saying is because I wanna thank, uh, Tony, whoever did this, on the one, two, three, four, five. The sixth whereas clause explains exactly why we voted the way we did. Even though some of these people were a little bit, but the property is bordering the other property. So I can explain to them why they didn't get the property.
Right.
Because this property is bordering the other property, which takes precedent, am I right, Mayor?
Yeah, in this particular case, a lot of things entered into it, but that's definitely the most important one, yes.
Would you like her to read the, the whereas?
Yes.
Six whereas. Six whereas.
The six whereas.
Read six whereas now.
Whereas the prop- Whereas the property disposition committee having met and having made the following recommendations for sale. Sixty-five Academy Street to O.S.Y.R. Edry LLC, Israel Edry, for thirty-six hundred dollars will provide city with a fifty thousand dollar performance bond. Sixteen Union Street sell to Timothy Holzhauer for fif- for five hundred dollars owns parcel next door. One twenty-seven Division Street sell to Jose Palicia for one thousand dollars who owns parcel next door and has been maintaining since city demolished structure. And thirty-six John Street to Lorenzo Vargas and Jasmine Vargas for fifteen hundred dollars who own the parcel next door and has been maintaining since city demolished the structure previously contained thereon. Be it hereby resolved that the sale of sixty-five Academy Street to O.S.Y.R. Edry LLC for consideration in the amount of thirty-six hundred dollars is hereby authorized. And is further resolved that the sale of sixteen Union Street to Timothy Holzhauer for consideration in the amount of five hundred dollars is hereby authorized. And is further resolved that the sale of one twenty-seven Division Street to Jose Pollicia for consideration in the amount of one thousand dollars is hereby authorized. And it is further resolved that the sale of thirty-six John Street to Lorenzo Varga and Jasmine Var- I'm sorry, Lorenzo Vargas and Jasmine Vargas for consideration in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars is hereby authorized.
We already voted, so.
Look it again. Some hold.
You wanna do it and roll it again?
Yeah.
Alright. Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Redo.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
No, yes.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
This next resolution Kelly's gonna read?
Okay, resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-four. Ceremonial resolution recognizing June twenty-twenty-five as LGBTQI plus Pride Month in the city of Amsterdam. Um, I did read it previously, so I'll just skip to the end now, therefore be it resolved, the city of Amsterdam celebrates June as LGD, LGBTQI plus Pride Month and dedicates itself to be a welcoming and inclusive community for all. Is there any discussion? Uh, so moved, you call the roll.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Do you guys know where I stand? Um, just feel the need to quickly explain the vote here. Um, I stand on my Christian values and uh, family values first, so I just have a differing set of beliefs, and for that reason, I don't know. Thank you.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-five. Resolution authorizing request for proposals for concessionaire services at Veterans Park by Alderman Holiday.
Just read the first whereas.
Whereas the city of Amsterdam is seeking a concessionaire to operate a food trailer at Veterans Park on Locust Ave for the twenty-twenty-five season beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved, any discussion? Starting process, cool.
Alderman. Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-six. Resolution authorizing contract with Megabytes Events LLC in connection with concessionaire services at Riverling Park by Alderman Marticello.
So moved, any discussion? Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-seven. Resolution authorizing termination of contract with Brent Jaeger and Corey Jaeger in connection with concessionaire services at Riverling Park by Alderman Marticello.
So moved, any discussion? Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-eight. Resolution approving audit by Alderwoman Collins.
Some move. Any questions? Call the roll.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two thirty-nine. Consent, resolution contract award twenty-twenty-five street resurfacing program by Alderman Marticello.
So, and just, um, you got the bid.
Now therefore be it resolved that the common council um, authorizes the contract award for the twenty-twenty-five street resurfacing program and be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Delsignor Laptop Paving Inc.
So, call the roll.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two forty. Consent, resolution honor guard budget transfer by Alderwoman Collins. Whereas the city of Amsterdam has one thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and sixty-five cents available in honor guard donations that were received over the course of several years.
Moved to the resolve.
Resolve, the controller is authorized to make the following transfer from the restricted general fund balance to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget as follows. Increase revenue fund balance appropriation, four hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Increase expense clothing allowance, four hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents.
Some hold. Any questions? Alderroll.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two forty-one. Consent, resolution in support of Port Jackson Bachi Club formation for a not-for-profit corporation by Alderman Marticello.
Okay, so moved, and then read the second whereas clause and the resolve clause.
Whereas the Bachi Club is desirous to raise money for renovation of the clubhouse owned by the city at twenty-five Erie Terrace, and the city supports their efforts. And resolve that the city supports the formation of the not-for-profit corporation of the Port Jackson Bachi Club pursuant to IRS code five oh one C three.
So moved. Any discussion, please? Thank you for your support. Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye. Thank you, Tim.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two forty-two. Consent, resolution authorizing the award of contracts to provide lawn care services by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved, any discussion? Please read the first whereas and skip to the resolve.
Whereas the city has advertised publicly for bids from landscaping firms to provide lawn care and manage vegetation overgrowth at numerous city-owned and vacant neglected properties. And resolve that the mayor is authorized to enter into agreements with Alturi Lawn Service for Zone One, Outdoor Designs for Zone Two, First Class Property Services LLC for Zones Three and Four, with each being, each said bid being awarded in the amount of one hundred dollars per property month, per property mo per month.
Call the roll.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Sorry.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
I'm just being consistent, no.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash two forty-three. Consent, resolution authorizing twenty-four Regina Lane to connect to sanitary sewer by Alderman Holiday.
Not to get too tricky, but can you read two, four, six, and then seven? Line, so the second whereas, the fourth whereas, and then the, be it further resolved? We'll save something.
Did I get that safe, 'cause I didn't.
The second whereas, the fourth whereas, and then the be it further resolved.
We got the smart one in the room here.
Two, four, six, seven.
Well, they're not numbered, is that one here? Are there eight total? 'Cause I'm up one on that.